Good evening. The North Las Vegas City Council welcomes you to our city council meeting tonight, and our redevelopment agency welcomes you to their meeting, which will be in the middle of these meetings here. There are four public forums set aside for public comment, one at the beginning and one at the end of the redevelopment agency meeting, and one at the beginning and the end of the city council meeting. If you wish to speak, please complete one of the blue cards that are located on the table outside the main entrance where you came in, or over here to my left on the podium rail. Please give the card to the city clerk, Ms. Jackie sits right there, and she will hand it to the assistant, the mayor pro tem, and we will ask you to come up, limit your comments to more than three minutes, and we hope that you don't avoid some repetition. Madam City Clerk, are we in compliance with the Nevada open meeting law?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, we are.
Thank you very much. Tonight, we have the opportunity, having the invocation given by Elijah Simmons of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, and we will have, following that, we'll have the pledge of allegiance given by Mayor Pro Tem, Richard Churchill. Please rise, Elijah.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank thee for this time to get together. We is blessed that we will be able to accomplish the things we need to in a timely order, and that greatness will come to all who participate here. In the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Elijah, and thank you, Councilman, Mayor Pro Tem. Tonight, we're going to have two presentations for business and organization of the month, and Councilwoman Goins Brown has chosen those. We're going to go down to the presentations. One is Studio 305 Home Raleigh Project, and the second one is Reasons Banquet Hall. So, Council, let's go down.
So, in, one, two, okay. In celebration and in honor of Black History Month, I kind of didn't follow the rules this time, and it was just so difficult to decide out of so many minority-owned businesses in Ward Two, and so I narrowed it down to two of my favorite places, and we're going to start with the first ones, which is Reasons Banquet and Events Hall. And if you're familiar with Reasons, it's a beautiful venue that services the community for weddings, banquets, dinners, all sorts of public events, and the ambiance is just so beautiful in there. You're treated like family. You're treated very well, and you will have a great experience if you ever book anything at Reasons Banquet Hall. So, I'm going to ask Colleen James, come on up, and I also have Tony Curtis. Tony's not here. So, come on up. I just want to thank you for being a part of the North Las Vegas community, the North Las Vegas family, and for all you do to give people a place to go where they have a positive, beautiful experience for whatever event that they host at Reasons Banquet Hall. And so, this reads, Reasons Banquet and Events Hall, located at 3277 West Craig Road, Suite 140, for providing quality service since 2016. The friendliness and professionalism of your staff, as well as the overall experience, is one of a kind. Congratulations, and wish you continued success.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I would just like to thank the city of North Las Vegas first, and everybody that supported us and that are still supporting us, because we are still going strong. It hasn't been the easiest thing, especially with COVID, but we are still here, and we are like family there. I would say sixty-five, seventy percent of our people are from someone that told somebody about something else, and we work hard, very hard, just so that people like you and I can enjoy a place that we have. I just want to say thank you, and I will be putting this on the wall.
And not too far from Reasons, like across the parkway, is Studio 305 Home of the Roll Project. I met Tyrell Roll probably, yeah, it's been since 2016, just to help you get your business up and running and get the doors open, and then invited to some awesome, amazing performances at that studio. The work this young man does with young people is absolutely amazing. Not only is he teaching the art of dance, and so many, is genres the right word to use? So many different genres, but he's building motivational young people. He's working on self-esteem. He's making sure these boys and girls go to school, that they're staying up on their studies, and it's just like a family environment when you go into that studio. So, I would also urge you, when they ever have a performance, please go and see what these young people are, can do, and just the skill level is just top-notch, and it's just true professionalism when you visit that studio. So, if you want to come up, and whoever else is going to join you today? This mom? Hi! And so, this is at 3251 West Craig Road, Unit 150, and it reads, "For empowering the youth in our community through dance since 2016. Thank you for inspiring, motivating, and educating the youth to appreciate the fine arts." Congratulations, and we also wish you continued success.
I guess I will speak first. I want to thank everybody who showed up. Thank you guys for recognizing the work that we do, and especially that my son does, because he pours himself into these kids, you know? And as a nonprofit studio, we are nonprofit, and what we do and give to these kids is strictly from the heart, you know? This is a whole love relationship, you know, the art of dance and the love of kids. And we haven't been always, it hasn't been easy for us at all, you know, but the love of the kids has kept us going, and God has seen to it that we were able to keep the doors open. So, you recognizing us means a whole lot, you know? Now, we just need some grant money. Now, we need some grant money. But thank you guys so much. We appreciate you.
Again, like she said, my mother, my business partner, we are very appreciative to everything you guys have been doing for our city. As the owner of Studio 305, my goal is to just motivate, and again, I'm going to run into different dancers, or students, or people who are just trying to find themselves, or find where they fit in the world, and that's the biggest mission, and I think that's the biggest accomplishment right there, is just allowing somebody to come into a space and feel welcome, no matter what's going on in their personal lives. They have a family that they can come to, they have a family they can always depend on, love on, love back. And again, our mission is just to share, and we're going to continue to share. We've got to release for three more years. So, we've got at least three more years, so we're going to continue to share as much as possible. Again, thank you guys for having us. We're very appreciative. Thank my dancers right here for all coming through, and all my parents over here are so happy and so grateful. Again, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
You guys have grown too, you outgrew your space, and so you're in two studios, actually. That's awesome. That's awesome. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
You don't need this anymore, right? Oh, no. Thank you, Pam. It was nice to get some young people in our meeting again. That was very nice here. Now, we're going to move on to our council items. Councilmember Barone?
Thank you, Mayor. That's always good to see, you know, a celebration of life. You know, there's nothing that demonstrates life more than, you know, the arts, dancing. Unfortunately, this past weekend, we had a tragedy visitor our city, and it affected several long-term city residents, including an entire family in Ward One. Of course, there are no words that could possibly express, either personally or for a city, just how deeply we regret what happened. But on the other hand, we always ask ourselves after these tragedies, what can we do? How can we prevent these things? Well, you know, I also sit on the RTC, and just a couple of weeks ago during the RTC meeting, we're getting a presentation there by Ms. Wallow, the director of the Nevada Department of Transportation, and of course, she was outlining how in our state, there's been an increase from 2020 to 2021, an eighteen percent increase in the amount of fatalities, you know, traffic-related fatalities, that is pedestrian versus auto, auto versus auto, eighteen percent. And in retrospect, the number-one factor in these accidents was speed and inattention. So, when we ask ourselves, well, what can we do, you know, to prevent these things? A lot of it has to do, I think, with personal, with personal responsibility. As a driver, I drive a full-size Chevy pickup truck. Once it's going at forty-five miles an hour, that's a lot of power, and it is incumbent upon me, as a person, to be responsible, to make sure that I am handling that vehicle, that if I'm at a traffic, if I'm at a traffic light, and there are pedestrians, that I make eye contact with them, they make eye contact with me, that I don't run down the street texting, or watching a video, or doing what people will do. This Saturday, my community friends and I are organizing a caravan, a caravan of remembrance, that will be, it will start at the, I'm sorry, the Cheyenne Sports Center, it's located at Cheyenne and Pecos, and we'll head west about 4:00, 4:30, and I'm hoping that we're asking people to bring their signs, signs of remembrance, signs asking for people that one more traffic fatality is just way too much. We're asking people to bring red ribbons. This is, of course, also February, with St. Valentine's Day coming up, so it should be easy to find a red ribbon, and the plan is to end up at the crossroads where this whole incident occurred. We'll have a little bit more, I know I will be putting things up on my Facebook, and there'll be a few more for information. But again, now, what can we do? If we want to honor these people, well, any more traffic accidents that can be prevented, we can prevent them by slowing down just a little bit, committed driving five miles an hour slower, or even better yet, committed actually driving the speed limit, you know? Let's face it, is a person's life your life, life of your loved ones? Is it worth that five extra minutes that it would take to get you, to maybe wake up five minutes earlier, get out the door five minutes earlier, so you don't have to drive like a maniac? Thank you very much.
Councilman Mayor Pro Tem Churchill?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, most people out in the public, when something like this happens, you see it on the news, and more times than not, if not every time, the reporter is standing outside the crime area or outside the accident scene, and behind that person is the tape, you know, telling you not to pass in an accident scene. But until you have the opportunity, like our firefighters and like our police officers, to actually be inside that perimeter tape, you don't really sense the horror and what went on over there. You know, we had an opportunity to see a little bit of that from the perimeter ourselves recently. I just died it in Councilman, Councilman Black. But, you know, for officers, both firefighters and our police officers, to be able to see that almost on a regular basis, and deal with that, how that affects your mind, you know, long-term, even after the incident, and you go back to where you were, and you see that again, maybe a couple of days again, and maybe next time, it's very difficult. It affects your home life, it affects everything. So, I would only like to let the public know that what you see on the news is just two percent, or maybe one percent of how bad it is, until you actually see what it does to people's families and people, you have no idea how important it is to drive safely out there, and you never know when your turn may come around, like that terrible day there. But I just want to extend my appreciation to our police officers, and to our firefighters, and to several of our VIPs that came out that day, that evening, and that day, and thank them for their professionalism, day in and day out. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Black?
Thank you, Mayor Lee. It's a little bit difficult, it may seem a little inappropriate, to shift gears away from such a tragic and somber incident that occurred in our community, but I, you know, we have to keep moving forward, and there are great things going on in our community despite the difficult things that occur. And so, with that, this past Saturday was, earlier in the day, was a great opportunity for members of the community to come together. Myself and Councilwoman Goins Brown were at Kyle Ranch, and it was an amazing turnout of residents and neighbors, learning a little bit about the history of North Las Vegas while we picked up trash and debris, and it was really a great experience. Also, we have a really fantastic group of seniors that attend our Silver Mesa Rec. Center on a regular basis for the programming, and I'm excited to participate with them coming up on February 15th for Valentine's Day lunch, so thank you so much.
Councilwoman Goins Brown?
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll just get the not-so-happy news first, and I'll just go out of order, but just in conjunction with what my colleagues have said, this Sunday, Minister Stretch Sanders and his organization, Stretch for Change Foundation, will host a community candle lighting and prayer vigil for the nine crash victims and their families, and it's going to be from 4:30 to 6:00 at the Martin Luther King statue on the corner of Cary and Martin Luther King, and I understand that a lot of the family members will be present for this candlelight and this prayer vigil, so that's this Sunday from 4:30 to 6:00. And also, just in conjunction with Black History Month, I'll be featured on a podcast called Indy Matters tomorrow at 2:30, and just to talk about what Black history means and just growing up here in Southern Nevada, so I'm just honored to have been asked to participate in this podcast. Next Wednesday is Baby Bounty's monthly diaper bank giveaway at the Martin Luther King Senior Center parking lot. It's Wednesday, February 9th, from 9:00 to 11:00, and they ask that you register at babysbounty.org, but if you do not register, you will not get turned away. You still will receive your diapers and wipes and whatever supplies that they have out there. And then, lastly, on Thursday, February 10th, our very own Acting Police Chief Jack Gravat is going to be one of the panelists at the NAACP's National Action Network presentation, and it's going to talk about bridging the gap with our police and with the communities and with schools. So, it's going to be held at the East Las Vegas Library from 5:30 to 7:00, so that should be pretty amazing, and congratulations for being on the panel.
Thank you very much. Great things happening in your different wards, but also sadness in the city tonight, and I'm glad you brought that up. Appreciate you.
Mayor, can I share one more thing? I'm sorry, I forgot to share this. Many of you know Quinn Walker. She's a Neighborhood Watch captain in Valley View, and she just wanted to make sure that, she says it's with deepest gratitude that she commends Richard Nichols and his staff member for going above and beyond the call of duty. They've just been having some problems with cats in their neighborhood, and she was just so thankful, and I was just so thankful to her to finally send something good, so that was a feel-good story. So, thank you to all of our animal protection services.
Thank you very much. Now, at this time, I'm going to adjourn this city council meeting and move it over to Chairwoman Goins Brown for redevelopment agency meeting real quick.
Okay. The North Las Vegas City Council and Redevelopment Agency welcomed each of you to their meetings. And so, wait, hold on one second, sorry. And we're going to move on to the redevelopment agency public forum. Madam City Clerk?
Madam Chair, we have no requests to speak or callers.
So, with that being said, I will go ahead and approve the redevelopment agency meeting agenda for February 2nd. That's you.
That's fine. So, right now, we're going to move on to the redevelopment agency agenda, Madam Chair. Item one is approve redevelopment agency meeting agenda for February 2nd, 2022. It's our recommendation that you approve the redevelopment agency as published.
Questions or comments? Not a call for a motion?
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. I'd like to make a motion to approve as published.
We're blank.
Take a voice vote.
We can do it by voice vote if you want, but we're blank.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
Moving on to consent agenda, Madam Chair. The consent agenda, the redevelopment agency consent agenda consists of one item, and it's our recommendation to approve the redevelopment agency consent agenda as published.
Any questions or comment on consent? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Move to approve?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion pass.
Okay. Moving on to the second public forum. Madam City Clerk, do we have any written comments or callers?
Madam Chair, we do not.
With that being said, I will close the public forum, and I'll now adjourn this meeting of the redevelopment agency back to the city council meeting and to the mayor.
Great, thank you. Appreciate you moving on. We're going to move on, Ryan, and then we'll just do a voice vote until they can do that. Moving on to the city council first public forum, this is time set aside on posted agenda items. So, if you wish to speak on any of the items on today's agenda, now would be that time. Madam City Clerk, do we have any blue cards on the posted agenda items or callers on the phone?
No, sir, we do not.
We do not. Then we are going to now, unless anybody from the audience would like to come up at this time, we'll close the public comment, and we're moving on to the agenda.
Item three, approve city council regular meeting agenda for February 2nd, 2022. Mayor and councils, our recommendation to approve the agenda as amended.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any comments and questions on move the agenda? If not, the chair will take a motion as amended.
Sorry, Mayor, I forgot to make the amendment.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. I'm sorry about that. The agenda consists of items four through fourteen. Staff recommends withdrawal of number item, of item number eleven, and approval of the consent agenda as amended.
Thank you very much. I talked to Cass about that eleven, so I feel good about that. So, we have, I'll take a motion once more to approve the agenda as amended now.
Move to approve as amended.
We have a motion. Please, voice vote. Aye?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Moving on to the consent agenda. Oh, I just did that. Set public future hearing mates, hearing dates. Madam City Clerk, I so direct you to set any hearing dates as necessary. Am I lost in this agenda, or is that where we're at?
You're correct, Mayor, that's where we're at.
That's where we're at.
This is, I mean, we're getting some strange things up here. Okay, thank you.
There's something, we're experiencing some difficulty with the system at the moment, sir.
So, as so noted, right? You'll?
Yes, sir, so noted, we will do so.
Okay. Moving on to business.
Item number sixteen, approve and authorize publication of the 2022 municipal election proclamation.
Mr. Mayor and counsel, I'd like to note that the posting of the proclamation in the newspaper may be delayed up to February 15th.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments or questions? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Make a motion to approve?
Aye.
Aye.
Items approved?
Item number seventeen, appointment of eleven members to the newly-established City of North Las Vegas Educational Advisory Committee by city council.
Thank you very much. Counsel, I think you interviewed a lot of people, so I think we're well aware of the committee, so if there's any comments or questions, if not, the chair will take a motion.
Move to approve?
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, Jackie, Ms. Jackie. Moving on to ordinancees, introduction only.
Mayor, council, item eighteen, introduce ordinance number thirty-one oh six, an ordinance related to zoning, reclassifying approximately thirty-two point nine-two plus minus acres from the MPC RZ-10, master planned community residential up to ten dwelling units per acre district, and MPC Muz master planned community mixed-use zone district to PCD planned community development district, ZN-27 2021, Regal Revere at Tulley Springs, where property located at the northwest corner of Revere Street in Clark County 215, and providing for other matters property related there, too. And item nineteen, introduce ordinance number thirty-one oh seven, an ordinance related to zoning, reclassifying approximately two point oh nine plus minus acres from a PED planned unit development district to a PUD PAD planned unit development, planned infill development district, ZN-28 2021, Conway and Washburn, consisting of a thirteen-lot single-family subdivision, where property located at the southeast corner of Washburn Road and Conway Street, and providing for other matters property related there, too.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Moving on to the city managers report.
Mayor and council, just one second. We're on item number seventeen, we're just checking to make sure that the attachments to the agenda actually had those eleven names, and that they don't need to be read into the record.
Would you like them read in the record?
We're just, we're checking real quick, because legal's saying that they're not, they were not on the posted agenda, so is clerk finding something different? Mayor, if, at your discretion, if it'd be okay if we brought item seventeen back up for consideration, read the eleven names into the record, and then took another vote on?
Moving on to, back to item number seventeen to revisit that, to do it appropriately, the appointment of eleven members to the newly-established City of North Las Vegas Education Advisory Committee by the city council. Would you please read the names into the record?
Sure.
The viewing audience, we're having technical problems with our computers today, so the city clerk is doing her best here. with our computers today, so the city clerk is doing her best here.
There's difficulty with the computer system at the moment.
And Madam City Clerk, on my screen, it's showing a no vote, and that should be a yes vote, not a no. I don't know if anyone else can see that. Okay, thank you.
Sarah, do you just have the names? Or we could just say them out loud and get moving on? So, why don't we just? I don't have a problem with that. I'd rather have it done properly. Would that be okay? So?
So, Mayor, what we'll do is we'll check to see if those names were publicly noticed. If they were not publicly noticed, then we'll bring this item back to the next council meeting if that...
That makes a lot of sense. So, we'll, item seventeen has not been voted on. We brought this back up to the council. We're just going to move this to the next meeting in two weeks. Now, moving on to the city manager's report.
Well, I was going to talk about how amazing our IT team is. No, I'm just teasing. Mayor and council, I have nothing to report at this time. Thank you.
Okay, wonderful. Moving on to a second public forum now. Now is the time set aside to speak on issues that are not on the agenda tonight but are within the jurisdiction and controls of the city council. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Remember, no items raised during this second public forum may be deliberated on or acted upon by the city. However, any item discussed may be referred to the city manager or city staff or for action by the city council later date. Madam City Clerk, do we have any blue cards, written comments, or callers on the phone in the second public forum?
No, sir. We do not.
We do not? Is there anyone from the audience that would like to come up and see the council at this time? Seeing none, we're going to close the public forum, and this meeting is adjourned.